And welcome to the City of Breezy Point Planning Commission meeting. I will call the meeting in order and ask for approval of the October minutes.
Make a motion, approve the minutes.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion passed. Council Lee is on report, Councilman Lilly Hi.
Last Monday, or a week ago Monday, the city council met. Major items of discussion had to do with the community center. Woodseth and Nolting put on a presentation of the proposed community center, what some of the options were and the results of the survey. There was well over 500 responses on the survey, which was very, very good. Better than 80% are in favor of it. We just got the raw data and I haven't had a chance to go through that yet. But the comments in the presentation was very well received. And we are moving forward to start flushing out the project, get some preliminary estimates on how much each option would cost us. Then there was also a discussion on the short-term rental. Decision was made to go forward with the ordinance that we have essentially outlined with just a couple of minor changes to it. And we will be looking to have that ready for approval probably by the first of the year. We adopted the 2022 fee schedule that had a little discussion in that there was a going to be a charge for use of the disc golf course. And that was, that charge was removed. So the disc golf course will remain free, at least for now. And then we also looked into the debt schedule and with some accelerated payments, we can be debt-free by next year?
January of the next year.
January of next year, yes. So that is a big milestone for us and it really enhances our financial stability. And then there was another discussion on the disc golf course and expansion. Some disagreement there as far as where we want to go. We're going to be continuing discussion on that. And then we're also going to be doing resurfacing on County Road 4, basically between Lake Shore and County Road 11. And that's scheduled for 2023, correct? Yes. And that will be, it'll be a little bit of a disturbance, but we're going to have the public informed and looking for comments from the public on that resurfacing. And other than that, that was about it. Any questions?
Question?
Tracy? Yeah.
I had heard, I did not, A, participate in the survey, B, I was not at the meeting, but it's my understanding that you were throwing around $8 million and no swimming pool.
Yeah, I'm not going, I'm not going to quote any numbers on that because I don't remember them off the top of my head. But we will get all of the options.
It was 7.8 with a swimming pool.
With a swimming pool.
And an indoor pickleball court.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Had clarified it, that's why I should have been there.
It was a very good presentation. And is the presentation online, isn't it?
It is online in the city council packet from.
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom. Next on our agenda is open forum number one. That's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium and speak if they would like to. If not, we'll close open forum number one. We have two open forums, one a little later on the, on, in the agenda. So if you would like to do it later, you can. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a zoning ordinance amendment on storage sheds. We will open the public hearing and Jerry, could you review the proposed amendment for us?
Sure. This proposed amendment is a redo of the definition of a storage shed. And it allows, it would allow for one storage shed to be exempt from impervious surface requirements in, on small lots. This is prompted by some issues that have come before us as far as variances for, for storage sheds and no places to put them in, in small lots. Trying to keep the neighborhoods clean at the same time, thereby allowing at least a 10 by 12 to happen without worrying about impervious coverage requirements. The only stipulation is that the shed can't have a permanent foundation, which means it's just on skids, most of them are. We tend to get a lot of these type of requests. And rather than handling them through a tedious variance procedure, we just thought it would be easier to make the amendment and make the exception for one on a lot.
And do you have a staff review for this amendment?
I do not.
Public input on, on this. And if you do have input, would you come to the podium and introduce yourself? Tell us where you live. Looks like no public input. I will then close the public hearing unless a commission member has a question or concern.
I just have one on the storage sheds. You starting to see some of these kind of canvas storage sheds?
Pardon?
You know, the kind of tent-looking storage sheds around?
Technically, those aren't allowed. We don't, we don't react to them unless there's a complaint about them. They would be considered some kind of a temporary structure.
And it does say that in the ordinance someplace. It does, okay. Guess I didn't see it, so, okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Lee?
So the, on the height, 12 feet, is that's, I'm assuming the peak from ground to the peak for the height?
Midpoint to the roof.
Midpoint of the roof?
Yes.
So if it's a slope roof?
I'll draw you a picture, it's much easier. That's the midpoint.
Okay, that's what I, yeah.
Tom, do you want to just flash that so we can all see it down here? Since.
It's like an A. It's like an A with a.
Basically, you have your roof that goes up, okay? And then it's the midpoint of that roof. And that takes into account the various slopes of the roof.
There's a drawing in your ordinance code book?
Oh, okay.
Under the definition, building height?
Ah.
And that's for all structures, not just the shed?
Right.
So that would be kind of between the peak and then the top of the sidewalk, maybe?
Yeah. So that takes into account, you know, whether it's, you know, 1212 pitch or steeper or, you know, 412, something like that. It's that midpoint.
Other questions?
Very painful over the years.
I will then close the public hearing on the amendment of the shed ordinance and move to our next public hearing, which is to consider a zoning ordinance amendment, creation of an R5 zoning district. I will open the public hearing and again ask Jerry if you could review this for us.
This proposed R5 residential district would be a brand-new zoning district. The history behind it is more the discussion with the sheds and the small lots and how do we deal with the small lots? And how do we deal with variances upon variance upon variance in some of these areas where the lots are very small? Taking that a little bit further, we had a variance request for a deck not too long ago in the Circle Drive neighborhood. And we looked at the Circle Drive neighborhood and some of the planning commissioners thought that maybe that should be treated as a special district. Something that's historical, something that is, is there. How do we, how do we deal with that without going through the cumbersome variance process again? So we, we looked at the, we looked at the existing zoning of the area, which was R3. And we looked at the existing lots and the buildings that were there. And not very many of the lots and/or the buildings conformed to that zoning classification, quite frankly. So the intent was to try and craft a zoning district that more readily reflected what was actually there and potential for doing something different. The, the proposal that is in front of the planning commission for their consideration is something that reflects a lot of the same language as the R3, but the significant difference is in the setbacks. There, most of the Circle Drive neighborhood, none of the, I shouldn't say none, but most of them are considered legal non-conforming uses. We may be able to, because of, if setbacks were changed, they may becoming, they may be able to become legal conforming uses. And they wouldn't have to go through variance process in order to expand if they met setbacks. So the proposal changes setbacks in that specific neighborhood. If this is so, it's approved by the city council at a later date, would change the setbacks, first of all, would change the minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. I don't think there's very many lots up in that area that are over, that are 10,000 square feet. Most of them are three to five. We've changed the lot width requirement from 40 to 25. We've changed the structure setback from the right-of-way from 35 to 10. It would change the structure setback from the side from 10 feet to seven. And it would change the structure setback for a driveway, I mean, I'm sorry, driveway setback from five to three. Those, without going out and measuring, but using aerial survey, we were, we looked at that and thought that those were pretty close to what were, in some cases, or the majority of the cases, actual uses. We do know that some of those properties are probably right on property lines. No matter what we do, that can help them. But we think that this proposal would help lessen the dependence on variances and allow for some structural activity to happen without going through the tedious variance process.
And do you have a review of this, Jerry? Or you pretty much took care of it?
I think I just gave it to you.
I will ask for public input to this amendment. Again, if you would like to do that, if you would come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Joe Sherry and I reside at 30080 Circle Drive. And basically, what I'd like is to get this document so that I can go and chat it up with my neighbors a little bit. This meeting's the first I heard that we were looking to make changes. So I'm here to learn and understand and get educated. And I'd like to see the document Jerry's prepared. I think there's one on the table here, but I'd like to go home with one, if I may, and read it. So I can be more well-versed on how the impact of this is going to be to all of us.
It might be useful for you to know when the city council would be taking action?
I don't know when that's going to happen, Joe. The, all this information is online.
Very good.
And I believe I sent a copy of the letter to every individual in that, that neighborhood with this information.
Well, Jerry, I haven't seen that information and I'd like to.
Oh.
Would that be all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and if I could leave with a paper copy, I'd be very happy about that as well.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
My name is Ken Manke. I live at 29863 Shoreview Lane. I also own property on Fawcett Hill, Circle Drive. My request would be that we have some more meetings so that other people that live in that area can get to these meetings. This came out a week ago. Everybody's, 95% of the people up there have their cabins shut down. They're, they're not coming up here anymore. And I think it would be useful if you had a, set up a meeting where everybody could come in, or most of the people could come and discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
My name is Bud Smith. My wife and I, Janice Smith, at 30124 Circle Drive. Okay, right at the, at the curve. And one question, I think, in my opinion, limited as it is. I think this could be a positive for anybody up there that wants to expand and improve their properties. And we've had the cabin 25 years and we moved up here full-time two years ago. And we, we had the cabin completely redone professionally and through all the codes and everything else. So probably the only one up there that's up to code. But it's an area that's unique, really is. And when we bought it a long time ago, at that point in time, it would probably be not conducive to what it is now. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a unique area. And I think people that have those cabins for a long time like the historical part of it. There was a house built and it used to be the tennis court. And the people that came in there, he's improving it even though it's brand-new basically two years. And, you know, ours is kind of an irregular lot. We've got about, I had it surveyed two or three times, land decker back in those days, and about 2,900 square feet plus. And we have, with this type of ordinance, it would make it easier if we wanted to put a garage in. And my question would be, if a garage would be considered, we'd have to get a variance on that?
Have an answer to that, Jerry?
Without looking at the location and recognizing whether it meets setbacks or not.
Yeah.
You could possibly build a garage without one if you had enough room to do that.
Yeah. Well, I've sat in my office for years watching this on video. And the only thing I can say, sometimes the audio is really bad. And I'm glad you have meeting minutes. But we're fortunate enough to be able to come up here. And the deer, the birds and all that kind of stuff that goes with it. So, or one of the people that drive around at night looking in twilight and the deer kind of catch on to daylight saving time really quick. But the services up here, you know, when you come and go, we lived in Plano, Texas for 25 years. I built a house on the Pine River and in 87 was able to stay there about a year and then I was transferred. So we always had this place in mind. And this is where I'm going to be and this is where I'm going to stay. But the people that are up here are pretty much all pretty nice people. And I think your services, like I've gotten to know one of your policemen, Jason. He came out for a couple of medical emergencies. And those guys are really trained, they really are. And I've seen a lot of, I was in the, when I say the real estate, my job is to take care of real estate. So I'm not a realtor, never want to be. And, but if you look at the area and look at some of the demographics, this area is growing so much faster if you look at a chart compared to the areas around here. And it's a unique area. And there's a point where areas get to a certain point where you have to watch. Either it'll go downhill or it'll go up. And people that had real estate for sale, if it was on the market for a day, there must have been something wrong with it. But like I said, we had our, everything completely redone. We're here all winter and snow removal is wonderful. And when we had to call for some medical issues, probably 10 minutes, somebody was there. And we've met Jason. He knows where to put our dog if he has to come in. I mean, he's, he's a great guy. And I can't say enough about it. When you come up here on a limited basis, my wife and I didn't understand how big Breezy Point was. But when you get up here and be able to stay, you can drive around and see all these houses. Like, where in the hell all these come from? You know, what all these people do? And the, the, the people up here can work from their homes, most of them, a lot of them can. But I think this five would be an improvement. I think it's hamstringing a lot of people going through the variance and then finding out that it's not going to work. But I don't think anybody wants to build something that's going to be detrimental to the property. But I'm all for it.
Good, I thank you.
Yep.
We thank you. Any other public input? If not, I will close the public hearing and move to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider a variance application. Matthew and Rhonda Hanson, 10.
Joe, Jerry had a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Go ahead, well, I'll address it later.
Yes, okay. 10673 Oak Grove Drive, Breezy Point. Side yard setback for septic four feet. I will open the public hearing on this application and ask the applicant if they have a presentation. That be you? Okay. Again, if you would introduce yourself.
My name's Dennis Blasberg. I'm not a Breezy Point resident, but I think the deer are dialed into deer season. Rhonda and Matt approached us to do a remodel on their cabin. It's a quarter acre lot, pretty small, break off of a resort that used to be on Oswego McKee. And gives us about 10,500 square feet to work with. The remodel was, we investigated doing the remodel and it turned out to be, you know, some blocks, stacked block foundation, rotten floor joists, et cetera. The remodel would have cost darn near as much as a new house would. So we were proposing to demo the house in a shed. It's rather cluttered right now, so we're going to plug, or we're intending on plugging a house in there that's about 1,200 square feet within the buildable envelope. Given the size of the lot, we've kind of manipulated the house a little bit to, I guess, as best as we could. At one point, on the far west side of the house, there's a storage room for boat toys and things like that. And we could fit the septic tank within the setbacks, but then they're going to want to put a shed on there, which just sounds like maybe that's a possibility. But then the lot is cluttered again. So the, in investigating locations for a septic tank and drain field, the drain field is actually an old easement from the resort that's on a property to the north. We really have no place for the tank other than within the lakeside setback or plugging it into the side yard setback. And we're trying to get a reduction. The wells for the adjacent properties on the opposite sides of the lots and the septic tanks for the adjacent properties are parallel or close to this subject property. So it wouldn't cause any issues with wells or fresh water, et cetera. And then we'd be maintaining lakeside setbacks ultimately. We have a rainwater management plan, which would reduce phosphorus loading. We've got three possible locations, well, there's several locations, but we need to accommodate 217 cubic feet of volume for a storm event. And that can be variations of anything, basically 146 square feet by 18 inches deep to handle that volume of water that the building would be shedding, so. And that's probably, I don't know, Jerry, that could in the, that calculate, or the, the drawing, that yellow one that you got there, did that show up on?
They just got that today.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's brand-new.
Paper, paper?
They got a paper copy.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, you've got the yellow drawing, isn't it? Just proposed locations, I plugged in a few locations just to, as an example of what we can do for managing that water, which currently the property has no water management plan.
Questions at this point?
Does that septic tank have to be that big, 1,500? It's just a holding tank to pump up to the drain field, correct?
It's a, it's a, according to Martin Joyce, yes, it does need to be 1,500. And that's, that's basically, we've got an ejection pump in there. So we're going to be launching up, up the hill to the drain field distribution box.
Any questions, Marcy?
Clarification, you have three spots for rain garden. And is it correct you're looking at one spot to be able to accommodate it or multiple?
Well, it could be, you know, this would be two, but basically it has to accommodate 217 cubic feet of volume. So it could be variations of something bigger that's four inches deep. But what I proposed is 146 square feet by 18 inches in depth, two of those to accommodate the total volume. So it could be, you know, one big one in the front yard or something, you know? But the thought was that, I was guessing as to where the downspouts might be. And that would be where they would run right into better downspouts, so.
Lee?
So if I'm looking at this right, the drain field is on the other side of the road?
Correct. It's, it's the standard goofy resort property breakup, yeah.
But there's probably on the other side of the road that they own it?
Easement, yeah, it's actually the neighboring property. But we actually talked to the owners about potentially putting, and I don't, the easement language didn't describe much other than maintenance and whatever of the, of the drain field or the septic system. And Matt and Rhonda was, they were kind of apprehensive to create a disharmonious situation basically by, let's dig up this guy's yard and put a tank. And Matt and Rhonda was, they were kind of apprehensive to create a disharmonious situation, basically by, let's dig up this guy's yard and put a tank in there and deal with it from there. That was an approach, but they basically didn't want to upset the apple cart, so.
In the old system, that is that, I drove by there, is it right next to the house? Septic?
The old septic is on the north side of the road. Yep, yep. And it's pretty much straight up from that house, right up by that other building that's up there.
Tracy?
The drain field would not be on this owner's property.
Correct.
And the road under which it, the line goes, is that a private drive?
Yes, yes.
Is it, I guess it doesn't matter, gravel or paved?
Gravel, yeah. We're gonna directional board under that road.
No further questions.
Tom, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, we might have more questions a little later.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. Jerry, would you provide us your staff review?
Again, the applicant is Matthew and Rhonda Hanson. The address of the property is 1-0673 Oak Grove Drive, Breezy Point. The PID number is 1-0030697. And the zoning of the property is R2, unsued. The request is to install a conforming septic tank four feet from the side yard setback, 10 foot is what is required. The property is located at 1-0673 Oak Grove Drive. It's Lakeshore property on Lake Oswinamaki. The lot is approximately 10,482 square feet. And the lot contains a cabin, driveway, decks, walks, two outbuildings and a pump house. An existing cabin is 58 feet from the OHW. The buildings are considered legal non-conforming uses because they do not conform to the proper setbacks, which is basically 75 feet from the OHW. The lot is also considered a legal non-conforming use because of pre-existing zoning regulation. So, the lot slopes north to south from Oak Grove Drive to Lakeshore, about approximately 14 feet. The cabin is serviced by an onsite well and septic tank. Drain field is located across Oak Grove Drive on property owned by others. There is an easement, I think there's a copy of that easement, it's in your package. There is also an easement for that roadway itself, and that should be also included. Property is currently zoned residential medium density R2, unsued. Zoning ordinance requirements, which are applicable to the subject property. Setback is from the road right of way. There is no road right of way there, there's only an easement, so there is no setback from right of way. OHW setback, 75 feet. Side yard setback, 10 on one side, 15 on the other. Impervious coverage, 25 percent, and the maximum building height, 25 feet. Existing impervious coverage is 18.42 percent. The proposed impervious coverage is 24.95 percent. A variance is illegally permitted deviation is provided by Minnesota statutes 462.357 subdivision 6. As it may be amended from time to time for the provisions of this chapter as deemed necessary by the Board of Adjustment. When the strict interpretation of the ordinance would create a practical difficulty and be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property. When the deviation from the ordinance within attached conditions will still be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. Variances cannot create a land use not permitted in the zone. Variance review. Variances shall be decided within a reasonable time. Strict interpretation of the ordinance would be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property not created by the landowner. The deviation for, from the ordinance with any attached conditions will still be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. The land use created by the variance is permitted in the zoning district where the property is located. The variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. And the variance is not for economic reasons alone, but reasonable use of the property does not exist under the ordinance. Applicant contends that the shape and the size of the lot prohibit optional building alternatives. Findings to support or approval of, or approval and/or denial. The following findings are provided for the Board of Discussion in relationship to the approval of variance request. The practical difficulty is due to the shape and size of the lot. Residential dwellings are allowed in the R2 zoning district. The proposed reconstruct is reasonable and is consistent with properties in the area. And the proposed dwelling is within the building envelope. Following findings of facts may be used to support denial of a variance request. Commission would find no practical difficulty and the continued use of the existing structure provides for reasonable use of the property. The property owner is not deprived of their rights, but would be deprived of their desires. The alternative to installation of a compliant septic tank is a holding tank. Reducing the size of the proposed structure would allow for a conforming septic system. Board may by resolution choose to approve, deny, or modify the requested variance. The resolution should clearly state the reason for the approval, denial, or modification of the variance. I, I believe that concludes my report.
Any questions of Jerry? Roger?
We haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors, the neighbor to the west, I guess that would be.
I haven't heard anything from anybody.
Okay.
Which I'm somewhat surprised.
Marcy? Lee?
So, that, putting that new drain field on the other, you know, where the old one is, really isn't gonna change much over there, would it?
The drain field is going to remain.
Okay.
It's the septic tank location.
Okay, so you can continue to use the old system?
Yeah, the drain field, yes.
He needs to be at the mic, nobody can hear him, that's watching it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, when a resident complains that they can't hear the sound, that's what happens?
The drain field is going to remain, that's on the easement property adjacent. And what we're trying to accomplish is a location for the septic tank. Where the existing one is, I believe it's actually, it's gotta be, it's gotta be lakeside of what the buildable envelope is.
Don't recall, it's been a while.
But, yeah, in order to, yeah, that's basically, but Jerry, you mentioned a holding tank, is that an option? Or is there, is there a setback for that too?
I believe that's the same as the septic.
Okay, okay, so. Yeah, but the replacement will be collapsing, pumping and collapsing existing tank and then installing a new tank.
Tracy?
The existing drain field is already across the street.
Correct. And the existing tank is on the property lakeside of Oak Grove.
I have limited experience, but I always thought that was a really serious flaw if it wasn't on your own property.
Jerry?
Can you go to that original survey that shows how that property came about?
This one, Jerry, certificate of survey?
No, the, you had it up earlier.
Just looking at it, I thought, but. This one?
Nope.
If it's in the packet, we've got it. This one?
Yes, that one. If, if you look at that property, that property, that house that's under consideration right now was taken out of this original chunk of property. And there, there were other properties along that road, that easement, that were all part of a, of a resort at one time. And most of the properties are serviced by the other side of the road or the other side of the easement.
Drain field's being on that other side, on the north side?
There is a written easement for the drain field being over there that was taken care of when they subdivided these properties off. So, there, there shouldn't be concern about not having an available place for it. I think the concern would be is if that drain field were to fail, there wouldn't be a place for it. And then a holding tank probably is the only alternative that's out there.
Yes, or we can utilize that tank as the holding tank. It's basically the same construction or structure. With the difference of separation for salads.
So, the old resort cabins were using the drain field on the other side of the road?
Yes. Actually, it was all one property at one time.
Lee?
How old is that drain field, do you think?
I don't know, not sure. I, I did have Martin Joyce go out there and check it and it was good. That was my start, so.
Any questions, Tom?
Basically, looking down the road, should this Oak Grove become a public street? Would you have the ability to have a drain field on the property itself?
No, I don't think many of the properties along that, that what used to be the old resort, I don't think it's even possible with probably four of them. I don't know how many there were, but there's-
So, that would create a, a problem?
Yeah, as I, as I mentioned, you'd have to-
It would be a problem, basically, for everybody up there?
Yes, yes.
It would be within the 75 feet of the lake down, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Well, but the houses are already there, so, I mean, it would be non-conforming. But if somebody decided that they wanted to turn that street over to the city for some reason, then you really couldn't have a, a septic system going across the road.
You, you could, it would be going under the road.
I mean, would, would have a, be able to have a, a septic system going underneath the road?
If it's existing, yes, but if it's-
If it's what?
If it is existing, is there today and we were to accept the road?
Okay.
Probably, but it's not something we would avoid at all costs on a new road.
Okay, okay.
Sewer systems go under roads all the time, don't they?
But those are typically, those are always in the city of Breezy Point's private, or public.
Yeah, they're, they're not a private sewer.
Yeah, private sewer going to another piece of property on the other side of the road. That would be highly unusual.
Yeah, this is a unique piece.
We have a lot of those.
Thank you. I will ask for public input to this application. If anyone has input, would you come to the podium and, and introduce yourself? If not, I will close the public hearing and move to our next agenda item, which is official action on this variance request. If someone is ready, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the request, basically following the reasons outlined here and why we could approve it, which would be items one through four, which is, the proposed dwelling is in the building envelope. It is reasonable and consistent with the properties in the area. Residential dwellings are allowed in the R2 zone. And there is some difficulty with the shape and size of the lot and given the existing status that's been grandfathered in over time.
Thank you, Marcy, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any discussion?
At least it's behind the 75 feet of the lake. The only issue is the four feet and that's hence the variance. And if the neighbor doesn't complain, I guess, that's good.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of the recommendation to the city council on the definition of storage shed and the zoning district R5 amendment or creation. I, I assume Patrick and Jerry, we need to recommend, we need to take action recommending both to the city council?
Yes, you would.
I'd make a motion that we accept these two as submitted.
I think Jerry was gonna say something just as you-
You, you had one gentleman here that asked for further hearings. And there was also a written request that was forward to me today, asking for the same thing. So, maybe you should break those up into two.
Okay. With the provision that there be another meeting to consider the R5 creation?
Well, I think that's up to you to, to make that decision, but I, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that there were two of those requests. I can understand some of the, the meaning of the request because of the fact that most of the folks are gone already from, from that neighborhood. And they, they wanted more time to look at the, at the issue. I, I can appreciate that. We didn't have any controversy on the shed, so I think you could take care of the shed issue, make that recommendation. And then decide whether we should have any further hearings or meetings about it.
I, I should have read it more carefully. Paula Brewer is a resident, or she represent?
She represents her father.
Oh, okay, okay. Tracy, I'm sorry.
I would still think that we as a planning commission can recommend approval. And then we're recommending it to the council. Okay, the council, then, if they wanna have more input, fine, but we have been discussing this for about three months. And I don't know if they didn't have that notice or not. Plus, you know, if nobody's around now, when are they gonna be around to, to talk about it? So, I think it's cleaning up some issues and we're not saying, you know, not to have those meetings.
Would you mind sitting down for just a moment and then I will-
I'm just waiting my turn.
Okay.
There really isn't a public hearing or a, a public input.
So, I'm new to this, okay?
Okay.
I just want, I, I think Jerry was covering the bases pretty well, okay? And I could say that definitely communication could be tighter, probably from a variable of things, right? But thank you, Jerry, for speaking on behalf. I'm not ready to say, hey, this sounds great. I, I gotta assess it, man, I gotta look at it, I don't care if you've been talking about it for three- it for three months. Just came to my attention. That's all I'm saying, I'd like to have my time with it, okay?
Thank you, Joe. Are you prepared to make a motion, Tracy?
I would be prepared to make a motion that this group recommend approval, might put a caveat on it, but also urge that further public input be encouraged and discussed before the council takes action.
Okay.
But I'm thinking we want to do it. Maybe the residents need more information before they say they want to do it, or they don't want to do it, and maybe the council would also agree with that. But as far as I'm concerned, I can appreciate where you guys are at, and anyway, I'm prepared to make the motion, may die for lack of a second.
Do we have a second?
So, hold on a second.
No, no, I'm gonna call you out of order, there isn't a provision for you coming to the microphone. There will be during open forum number two, which is coming up.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Can I ask for clarification of the motion? Was the motion for...
The motion is for this planning commission to represent, or to recommend approval of the drafting of...
On the agenda, I've got it right up here, Tracy, and it's considered recommendation to council for one and for two, so I'm trying to clarify if you're making both or just one.
Well, I'm making both.
Thank you.
I have a question before we go this far. On that zoning, this impervious, you went from 25% to 50%.
Yes.
But if you actually have a motion on the floor, you have to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's dispense of that motion, I'm asking for a second, if there is a second.
Roger seconded it.
Oh, we did.
No, I didn't.
No, I don't think we, I don't think we got a second.
Scratch. Oh. I have a question.
The motion fails for a second. I would entertain another motion.
Actually, if now, if Roger had a question, would be the appropriate time?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's a good point, Patrick, yes. Roger, go ahead.
We have the setback and all that stuff, but nothing was ever brought up about the impervious going from 25 to 50. That's 100%, isn't it?
Right, and we crafted...
We talked about that quite a bit, I realize that. But after I figured it out, you got 2,500 square foot lots, if you go to, you can build a 900 square foot house on that thing.
Assuming you had setbacks.
Well, you should with seven feet, and three feet, and et cetera.
If, in fact, that area were not serviced by sewer, we'd never even thought about doing anything like that.
Right. But there is wells in there.
It's very, it's very, it's crafted the same way that the commercial district is treated. Commercial district is treated at 50% also.
Right.
Again, it's a unique neighborhood, and that's where that came about.
I just see 2,000 square foot lots with a 900 square foot two-story set on it. You could do it.
And maybe, you know, if that's an issue, Roger, I think, you know, maybe it takes more thought.
That was the only thing that kind of got me, was the 50%, you know? We go from 25 to 50%, is there a 4%? You know? I know we've discussed it a number of times, but...
Right now, actually, it is 30% for sewered lots in the R3.
Isn't it 25? Is it 30?
It's actually within a thousand feet of the...
Oh, okay, but I'm just going off the boat right here.
Okay. Just my thought.
Still need a motion.
So my question is on process. If we make as part of the motion to have a second public hearing, can we move this forward to the City Council, and they would be able to have a second hearing, or do we call that second hearing? That's kind of my question.
If you recall, the City Council actually referred it to you to hold the public hearing, so the public hearing is going to be at the planning commission level.
Then I would make a motion to approve the definition of the storage shed?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Now I would entertain a motion on the creation of the R5 zoning district.
I make a motion to have a second public hearing in the spring of the year. Is that motionable?
Patrick, you...
Technically, you're just continuing the public hearing to January Planning Commission, or the next Planning Commission meeting?
Is that agreeable for your motion, Marcy?
To continue, yes, I'd make a motion to continue on the discussion of the zoning district.
Okay. We have a second.
Second then.
We have a second discussion.
Okay.
No comments.
Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Open forum number two. This is when I can allow you to come to the podium.
I've never was much good at processing procedure, I have never been exposed to it, it's even, it's even harder, so I apologize.
We're not the best at it either, so...
We're all learning together, is that it? Yeah, so, so anyway, I think what we accomplished here today was, I don't know if this is bad or good, right, what's going on. I just know that I got exposed to it two hours ago, and it came up in a conversation over the weekend. I think that most people are, I don't know how much they looked into it, but the overall view is that it's, it's nice that it's being talked about, right? So I don't anyway think, you know, come at this in a negative way, I just, I need to understand because it affects me. And right now, I don't. And even though we went through this whole process, I want to, I want to take it home and just see how it impacts me, and have more of a discussion. And I guarantee you, there's a lot of neighbors that would feel strongly the same way about it. We're a pretty tight group up there. Many of you here can count for that, so...
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Any, anyone else? If not, I'll close open forum number two and ask if there's anything else for our agenda this evening.
So if we have a meeting after the first of the year, are they going to send each homeowner that information? So when they come? We don't have to have somebody saying, well, I can't come this day, and I can't come that day? It has to be a date set, and if they can't come, that's...
Lee, spot on, and thank you. Marcy, what I heard you say was spring, then what I understood to be said was, we, you know, and I assumed, because the year is ending, that we would look at it in January and then decide. I would also say, if we're talking about a date right now, I find it incredibly frustrating that many things happen in the winter when a lot of people aren't up here. And it just gets really difficult. That's the way it goes, and if it's important to people, they'll do it. But I think January is really tough unless you want to plan around the New Year's or ICE Fest, and everyone gets together then and talks about it. But otherwise, it's, there's, you know, it's...
Patrick, could you read the motion again? Or read the motion to us?
Continue to the next council or planning commission meeting.
Did I hear spring in your motion?
Based on what we had as a discussion, what was motionable was to continue the discussion.
Okay, okay.
So we could just continue next?
Okay.
Was it, where were we at?
Jerry?
If you're just continuing the discussion, you can continue this discussion on and on and on and on. Right, we don't want to do that, agreed. We really don't want to do that. Maybe, maybe the compromise on this gentleman's request, maybe we start thinking about doing it in April again. It's not crisis that we need to do this.
Say Patrick's name.
Frankly, it, the reason it's being held right now is the fact that we had some discussions about other issues in the area. It had nothing to do with the fact that it's closed down. I didn't take it that way at all, all right? If I was involved in the, this more often, which I would like to be, I would have been on the ball, right? So... You know, and maybe I'll offer this, too. There's, you've had a public hearing. Technically, you've, you've done your legal responsibilities as far as the planning commission is concerned. You haven't made the recommendation yet to the City Council, but you have done your statutory requirement of holding a public hearing on it. You can continue, we'll continue this public hearing, we'll have another one. You know, I might even offer that maybe it's easier to do something like a one-hour informal open house, where we get the residents in and let them ask questions about it. And then it can come to the planning commission, and you can make your recommendation.
We, we hear what you're saying, Joe, we appreciate it. I think that's why Marcy made the motion the way she did, so we're, our intent is to do it right.
Yep, that's what I feel, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just interject a little bit. When you make a recommendation to the City Council, and the way the City Council turned it back to you, that is to hold the public hearing, what would happen at the City Council would be they would accept or they would reject the recommendation. So I mean, if, if there was substantial public input coming into the City Council that they were against, the public was against it, especially by the residents up there, we can reject it. So you're really not taking any risk at this, at this level, okay? Were you to approve it tonight, it would go to the City Council most likely next month, next month, and during that month period, you would have the opportunity, the public would have the opportunity to weigh in and give their opinions on it, okay? And if the opinions were such that that would sway the City Council, the City Council would reject it, and you would start all over again. So that's, that's where it is. And it's, really, there is no risk at this level, at this, because all you're doing is you're making a recommendation to approve the ordinance to the City Council, and the City Council has that ultimate decision to make that final.
Although, Tom, we're not really recommending approval of...
You are recommending approval of the ordinance, okay? But that is only a recommendation. The actual approval comes at City Council.
Was that what your motion did?
We did not do that this time.
No, that's...
You seemed that we could.
Yeah. Quiet, 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 quiet. You're not, you're not supposed to be talking. Period. This is getting out of control. I am not in charge here. He is, okay? But right now, I am talking, you are to be quiet. Okay? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think it's important that we, we get this great. I, I don't see the motion approving or recommending approval to the council, Patrick.
What the, the planning commission has continued the public hearing, so there is not a recommendation on the second issue. What, Tom, the council representative is saying is, when you do make a recommendation, it is a recommendation, it's not an action.
Sorry, Tom, now I'm straight.
Right.
How about everyone else? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, can I say?
Sure.
But the storage shed is to the City Council for, right?
Correct, yes.
Anything else for our agenda? Jerry, do we have anything? If not, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.